Six o'clock, okay. Agenda review and disposition, any changes?
Just under other business, I just want to talk about the board meeting on the 16th.
You have a word to the floor, anybody have anything to say yet?
Uh, yeah.
We have another one. So we'll let you know when that one happens. Okay, approval of the minutes for December 19th. Anybody see anything that we need to change or?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, seconded by Kristi, all those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed?
Abstaining.
Thank you. Okay, student report.
He's busy tonight, Madam Chair.
No problem, principal report.
I just got back from vacation, from a long vacation, which was nice, so. Nothing to report to you guys.
Okay.
School's back, kids are back, they're all rested. They seem to be in good order.
Uh, no.
Not going with, I'll have more fun in the 16th.
Your last return.
Yes.
Christmas break.
Wrap that one up.
Okay, next committee meetings, teaching and learning, so they were scheduled for the 16th, but.
I'd like to have a full board meeting on the 16th. They may have a principal nomination for you, so just wanted to.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Everybody okay with that, January 16th, full board meeting at five o'clock?
Yes.
We're making that official.
We're making that official, if everybody's okay with that?
Yes.
Good.
Great, okay, discussion items, budget hearing prep.
So I pass out a folder to each of you with all the handouts, just a few things, I will go through them with you real quick, that's so you don't have to pick up anything downstairs when we get there. So just as far as format, Lisa's gonna just do a quick, quickly speak for a minute, and then I'm gonna go over the summary functions on the back page, and then folks can go through handouts and ask questions, and then you could either vote to move the budget forward to the deliberative, or if you want to do something else, you can do that too. So, are you all set with the process of that piece?
Yeah, I think, did we all take turns on the, well, there's three articles today, moving each article.
That's for the deliberative now, so tonight is just to kind of go over the budget and listen to the public if you have.
So I'll propose to move it on.
Move on to the deliberative if you'd like to, yep, so that's usually what happens at the end of that.
Okay.
All right. So the budget in your packet is all updated, so the only change you'll see is under the default budget, on the last page you'll see that the food service was added in there for $300,000, so you'll just see that there is, the numbers are closer on the default and the proposed budget, so last time we looked at the budget, there was about a $600,000 difference in between the default and the proposed, now it's only $300,000 between the default and proposed. But nothing has changed on the proposed side, as you voted on that to move forward with a 3% increase on the appropriations, so that's the budget piece. And just as far as handouts, quickly, the pink sheet is just the portion or percentage of each function to the budget, so something to be noted in this handout, you'll see a special ed line, which is the 1,200 account, for example, that says 20%, but there's other portions of the budget that contribute to special education, so for instance, part of your transportation line is special ed, occupational therapy, health services, speech, so there's, there's a number of other portions of the budget that contribute to special ed, they're just separated out by different functions, so just always a good graphic to look at as far as how that's spread out. The green sheet is the Pemme Baker assessment piece, we talked about this the last time, the tax worksheet, is that the best way to describe that sheet? Yep. So. Then the yellow is the assessment increases and decreases over the years, so we have from 2011-12 all the way to 2023-24.
So we're averaging in around 2.63%, and we were trying to say under 3%.
But the increase/decrease you'll see is that 4.2799 for the 23-24, that's for, for this year, yep.
Yep.
Then, and the golden rod, I think that's what that color is, is the unreserved fund balance used from each year, so that is your unreserved fund balances over the years. So it's always good to have this, that historical piece. In the blue, you have your enrollment history from 2006 to 2024. I always find this, the next white copy is your 20-year history of medical rates, so like I, like we know, our increases mainly are due to special education and to health insurance this year, so it's good to see that historical perspective, and then who's in the pool with us as well. So that's that. The next page is the retirement rates history. So again, from 1999 to 2023-24. And then you have your draft warrant articles, pretty straightforward this year, there are no collective bargaining agreements being proposed, no additional projects, it's just, just the budget that's being voted on. And then you always vote on that contingency fund to give you some flexibility if there is something uncertain, and then the negotiation to execute tuition contracts, which is always in there every year. That's it. After tonight, we will put these handouts up on the website after the hearing tonight, so folks can access them online.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Kyle?
Right, right.
Yes, go.
When is the deadline, when you have to have the final figure? Last year, you remember, we delayed voting at the hearing until we had the next board meeting because we had time. So what's the deadline when you have to post?
Do you have that?
I can pull that, yeah, just take me one second, please. Changes each. Last day of, this year, the last day to post the warrant, the budget, and the default budget for an SB two district with March meeting schedule is Monday, January 29th. This year, the last day to post the warrant, the budget, and the default budget for an SB two district with March meeting schedule is Monday, January 29th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, great. Other business, I didn't want to mention that the study to look at, the field and lights Other business, I didn't want to mention that the study to look at, the field and lights came in at $20,000 as opposed to $90,000, so that's a considerable savings, and I just came in at $20,000 as opposed to $90,000, so that's a considerable savings, and I just thought that was worth mentioning to everybody, so it'll only be 20, it won't be 90, and thought that was worth mentioning to everybody, so it'll only be 20, it won't be 90, and we'll get that down the road, but that is a long, long way away, it may be done in we'll get that down the road, but that is a long, long way away, it may be done in stages. stages. Any other business? Any other business? No, that's it. No, that's it. Okay. Okay. Privilege of the floor, two. Privilege of the floor, two. Anyone have anything? Anyone have anything? Okay, board member concerns? Okay, board member concerns? And we'll just get, okay. And we'll just get, okay. Great, so I will entertain a motion to go into non-public. Great, so I will entertain a motion to go into non-public. Peter for personnel, seconded by Barbara, I'll do a roll call. Peter for personnel, seconded by Barbara, I'll do a roll call. Bernie. Bernie.
Yes.
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 Barbara, Peter, great, thank you. Okay, welcome, everyone. I'm just gonna go over a few things, and then we'll have Kyle go over a few things, and we'll be going over the three articles, and then we'll take questions as well. Welcome again to our meeting. We have here at the high school five goals. Our first goal talks about SAT and proficiency at around a 3% baseline, students in grades nine through 10. Goal number two, we'll take ownership in their learning and behavior by maintaining a failure rate of 15% of students who fall one or more classes, or fail one or two classes. That's somewhat of a support system for our ninth and 10th graders in terms of at-risk and students that have transition issues, or struggling sometimes, sophomore year can be a challenging year. Our goal number three is the budget at around 3% annually. We have a sheet here too, if you guys see the handouts, there's one that talks about the last 13 years, you'll see our increases on that yellow sheet. Maintain, goal number four, maintain a dropout rate of less than 1% annually, by our calculations, we're at about 0.8%. And then goal number five, maintain communication with parent, district residents, and expand communication to sending schools, so things like math teachers from all over the district getting together and talking about the expectations, say, in middle school as opposed to the expectations in high school, and matching up goals, and setting students up consistently for entering the high school, at somewhat of a, you know, an equal playing field in terms of what they're learning from each sending school. Our board, like I said, meets at 5:00, then we have typically our teaching and learning, which covers committees, and that's the second Tuesday, third Tuesday of every month, and that pretty much covers, teaching and learning covers curriculum and education, and then our school operation committee meeting, which focuses on infrastructure and the building. Should be noted that this building is 211 square feet, 211,000 square feet, and the high school sits on about 47 acres. Improvements made to the high school this year through ESAR grants have been around 1.7 million, things like the HVAC system getting repaired and worked onto it, you know, you could wait five or 10 years and pay for the whole percentage, 100% of that project, but when we qualify for maybe 60% or 70% or a percentage of that, we want to jump at those funds and try to use them so that the town doesn't have to feel the impact of doing the whole, say, for example, HVAC system on its own. So it's things like that that we discuss typically in March, I mean, sorry, May and June, and we invite the seven town communities that vote on the budget for them to come out on those meetings and, and let us know their feelings and thoughts. We have, there's another sheet that talks about the money, that colored sheet is, I think that was, what color sheet was that?
The yellow one?
The yellow one, sorry, the golden rod, golden rod. These are funds that the board has intentionally not spent each year, indicated funds which have been utilized to reduce taxes raised by subsequent years. Presently, we have also committed $150,000 from the fund balance to help offset taxes for the proposed budget that we're talking about tonight. And again, seven towns vote on this budget, and four towns are tuitioning in their students. We are SB two, just to go over what SB two is, that's a deliberative session, which will be February 6th at 6:30, and then the second part of SB two, the second session they call it, is voting on election day for our budget, which will be three articles. Most of us experienced increases in our tax bills, and we're working hard to try to keep things in tow, specifically in this budget, the hardship was the increases, which is also in these handouts, the health insurance, that went up substantially, and that's not an option, we can't choose not to provide health insurance for employees in the building. And then the other increase that we had no control over was special education, you know, we, we planned for the worst, hope for the best, but at times that can make a change, and some of it gets reimbursed, some of it doesn't, and of course, we have to put that money in the budget as best we can. Lastly, I just, I wanna, you know, I always don't get a chance to say this, but the administrative team, teachers, support staff, facility, parks, crew, coaches, and the many volunteers, club advisors, I would say a lot of the employees here, their work goes far beyond the classroom, so many of them. Fundraise for things that they want to see happen here that we don't have in the budget, and they make happen, the opportunities are endless, and we highly, highly, high regards, regards for the faculty and employees in this building that work so hard, it's just not enough said about all of them, and then as well as the SAU board that supports this budget. And lastly, this will be Principal Parsons' last budget hearing, well, there's all kinds of lasts this year, but again, thank you, because, you know, a few weeks ago, we said we have to make cuts, and we have to, we have to change what we're doing, and you and Kyla didn't bat an eye and went right back to the drawing board and figured it out, so we really appreciate that, and all that you both do for the district. And then I didn't say that, I just would like to say the grant piece too, that we're so lucky to receive the grant money that's out there, and we'd like to recognize Kyla, her office, Pam Martin, I mean, the Perkins grant that contributed to the career-specifics health science media drafting culinary, outdoor education in Otis, that was 128,000 this year, so we appreciate their hard work of bringing in funds outside of the seven communities to help pay for 211,000 square feet building that requires a lot of expenses. And then lastly, I just want to thank everybody on this board that does such a great job and comes out and sacrifices their time to be here, and, you know, you're really a great board that's very focused, so thank you all for your hard work. And off to you.
All right, good evening, everyone. In your packets, you have several handouts, I'll be referring to the line-by-line budget, which is your thickest packet in your folders, or your packets on page 27. First want to talk about the process that the board went through, their first draft, their appropriations were up 5%. After that, there were recommended cuts to about 3.6%, and lastly, at their, at their last December meeting, there were third-rounding cuts, and now it's about 3.01% in appropriations. So I'll be going over page 27, just the summary as far as the significant increases and decreases across the board. Your 1,100 account, which is, a lot of, a lot of your budget is in regards to regular education. There are no new programs going into the high school this year, no new teachers, you can see that's gonna be down $75,000, that's mainly due to retirements, and we expect to hire folks at a lower rate for next year. So no new programs, no new teachers or programs at the high school for next year. Special education, line 966, the 1,200 account, you will see that's up significantly, 398,791. So I want to talk a little bit about what that involves. The majority of that is due to some recent legislation and more responsibility on the local district. So we have an increase of about 326,792, just in out-of-district placements. When I talk about out-of-district placements, they could be a day placement for behavioral kids, they could be children that are hospitalized, that cannot attend school, that we're paying for tutoring, or residential care, they could be children that are mentally ill. Some of these placements can be for a single child, up to 250,000 in-state, some are court-appointed, some are not. If they're court-appointed, the school only has to pay a portion of it, but if they are school-placed, then the, the school is responsible, responsible for the entire portion. If they're placed by foster care, or the Department of Children and Youth Services, then again, we pay for the school portion of that. That can range anywhere from as low as 75,000 per student, again, up to about 250,000, even more than that if they're out of state. So when you see an increase of that, that can be less, even if it's 326,000, that can be less than five children. So that has been a big difference. The other new legislation that's in place is that students that are significantly disabled now need to be, they used to have to be educated until the age of 21, the new law is that we, they extended an additional year till age 22. So that has had a significant increase, because it is for your more complicated students. So that is the majority of the special ed piece, just more and more ownership on the local district that sometimes we don't have control over. Charter schools are included in that. If you have a child that attends, say, is a Plymouth resident, a sophomore, and attends a charter school in Concord, and they're special education, the cost is billed to the Pemme Baker District at Plymouth Regional High School. So it's a really a moving target, and I know it's a significant increase, but there has been a lot more push to the local level, so I just wanted to review that in depth. As you move down, so we have the line 967, applied technology program, that's your career technical center, we are expecting retirements there, so you see that's down, 43,862. Co-curricular athletics and summer school, that's up about 15,000, and that's due to the, all those positions are in the collective bargaining agreement, same with some new athletic uniform cycles as well. Down to line 970, guidance drug and alcohol intervention, again, that is just staffing and connected to the collective bargaining agreement. Health services is the same. Psychological services and speech OT/PT, so that's occupational therapy, physical therapy services, so those are related services connected right to special education, so those services are connected to individuals. Nothing in assemblies, improvement of instruction, there's no increase. Library services, again, is up 6,339, that's just in your collective bargaining agreement, and salaries, no change in staffing. School board services, that's down 1,000. SAU services is up 20,195, that's no new programs, that's mainly due to health insurance and staffing, but there are no additional staff at the SAU. And that is split as 50% ADM, 50% equalized valuation, that's the approved formula. The applied tech director and tech coordinator, so those are just two positions, so that is just their increases. The principal's office, line 980, our principal is leaving, so we do expect a decrease in that line. Financial account is zero. Custodial services, so there were a lot of cuts between budget two and budget three, a lot of the projects that were taken out, and that is down 53,821. It's not that things have gotten cheaper, we did just cut and took more of a risk that we'll spend less in some of the maintenance areas as well. Transportation, the majority of that, it's up 60,000, that's directly connected to special education. Again, if students are being transported to day placements, or it's in their individualized education plans, that's separate transportation outside the bus-in contract, so that is connected right to special education again, and it's some for those 18 to 22-year-olds as well that can't ride the bus. Support services, so that's your school resource officer, and that's a split with Plymouth Elementary School, that cost. Building improvements is zero. Principal and interest is down 14,018. You'll see the big jump here on line 989, other than special ed, this is our big increase, that's the health insurance. And there is a handout in there that goes over the historical increases with the GMR and the health insurance, that is up significantly this year, 13.9%, but remember, the health insurance is tied to the collective bargaining agreement, so that reflects that piece. About 1,500 in dental insurance, and you have the federal funds and food service funds, which there's no increase, with a total of about 3.01%, which is 522,164. So that's in general what, what the increases are mainly due to special ed and those related services that I just went over, as well as the health insurance. Again, no new programs, no new teachers, we do have some retirements, so we do expect those to be in less. There are plenty of handouts that go over just some of the historical data as far as health insurance, your tax assessment, retirement, et cetera, so if you have any questions, I think, please, we'll take them at this point.
And everyone got the, the three articles? Great.
Yeah, so the, just quickly, I'll just do the three articles real quick, but it's pretty standard, it's the operating budget, the tuitioning contracts, and the contingency funds, which is the typical warrant articles, there's no contracts up this year for teachers' contracts or support staff.
And then you'll see with the article number three, the budget of 17,889,956, with the default budget of 17,628,686.
Yeah.
And sure, come on up, if you have any questions, just need to know your name and what town you're from, and go for it.
Zach Terrell, Plymouth. This question's probably for Dan. I'm trying to understand the tax rate impact for the town Plymouth in particular. Looking, looking at these rates, I can't tell if this 2023 rate is before the reassessment that we did, or after the reassessment that we did this year. So I don't know if you have.
It's after.
It's after.
Yeah, so if you look, if you're looking on the sheet, under the 2024 estimated tax rate at the bottom left, where net assessed valuation 2023 is the Plymouth number of $739 million?
Yes.
That's, that's the reassessed valuation of the town.
So 739 million is the reassessed, and when I come over and I look at the '24 rate, obviously that's based on this year.
Correct.
Is the 20, is this 2023 rate also being based on that number?
That '23 is the actual rate, that was for the tax bills that were issued in December by the town, relative to this district.
So, but that was based on that reassessed 739 million?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're not looking at a surprising increase there? It's actually 40.
Yeah, those, yeah.
So it, and so it's just a little bit, if, I say this in case somebody comes as a taxpayer, right, because if, if that's before, we would have expected with a big reassessment to see our tax rate, our tax number went down, but it went down in the 2022 to 2023, which wouldn't, they never would have seen.
When you say you went, you expect the number to go down, what number are you talking about? You talking about the total amount?
I'm talking about the tax rate.
The tax rate.
Which would have gone down for, for the town.
The tax rate did go down.
Exactly, but the taxpayers never would have seen that on a piece of paper in the context of the school. Because a year ago, when you showed this, you didn't know what we were gonna set our tax rate to, so if I pulled out one of these from last year.
Yeah.
It probably says $5 or $6 tax rate.
But it, but it, but it was clear that it indicated what year it was based on.
I agree.
Yeah.
I'm just warning you that if somebody, if somebody was to do that math or look at that, they might come in and say, well, we just had this reassessment, I would have expected this year the number to go down. It did go down, it just doesn't, it's not shown on the paper. Does that make sense?
I don't, I don't necessarily see it the way you see it, I, I think that we're dealing, we're providing accurate, real-time, valid data, right? So the number last year was the actual, if you dial it back 365 days, you would have seen the actual tax rate from the tax bills a month earlier, and projected tax rate based on the valuation of last fall. Now we're showing the actual rate from last month and projected rate for next year based on. on the valuation that was just completed.
I understand what you're saying, but if I was a taxpayer and I looked at this last year?
Yeah.
You would have set a 2023 projected tax rate of over five dollars. And the reality is the tax rate was three dollars and fifty-six cents. Because the town reassessed. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
Yeah? Thank you for the question.
State Representative Sally Fellis, I'm going to just hold this. Just to follow up on that last question, I know that Holderness also had a revow last year. Do you know if any of the, the other towns, if they did or they did not?
So, all towns in Hampshire require to go, undergo a revaluation every, at a minimum every five years. These numbers are, all towns, so they vary in terms of how much they change their valuation. It could be a large change based on overall revaluation. So, for example, Plymouth and Holderness and Ashland had complete town revaluations and have large changes. I could, we can go through the numbers, maybe offline if you would like, of each town's numbers. And then you have smaller tech, smaller numbers, where it's not a complete revaluation of the town, just an increase in maybe property development. So, for example, I want to say the town of Wentworth, which is this year, their evaluation was a hundred and thirty million, last year it was, excuse me, a hundred and thirty-three million. So, that town's total valuation went down, but a very small percent, right? Not only two or three million dollars, about two percent. Whereas, as, as you know, Holderness, for example, went up almost fifty percent, which contributes to their change in assessment, and Plymouth went from four ninety-five to over seven hundred million. So, I'm not sure if I answered your question right, I can, I can, we can go, we can go town by town if you want, or--
No, that, that's just fine. I'm just thinking in terms of the ones that had the complete revow--
Mm-hmm.
That if you're still kind of in sync with the other towns, but--
So, so I can't speak to what the individual towns do in terms of their process or their schedule. I just, I'm not involved at the town level, to be honest with you.
It's one of the things that, that I work with is statewide property tax.
Yeah.
And that uses the equalized valuations and also in some of the documents, I can see the difference when there's not a, you know, when they get too far out of sync, the equalized valuation and the real value, the assessed valuation.
Right.
But the question that, that I originally wanted to ask has to do with transportation. Can you tell me anything about the split between the transfer, how the transportation is split between regular ed, special ed, you know, athletics, whatever else might be a major factor?
Sure. What are we talking about?
Yeah. There was one from last year.
So, right now, we're at the last year of our regular transportation contract, and that remained about the same, at about four hundred and seventy thousand. Ninety-five thousand is generally towards athletic programs. And then four hundred and ninety-two thousand, five forty-six is your specialized transportation. That is up fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four from the year before. That's just for special ed transport.
Tech, this is S D Plymouth. So, I was going to talk a little bit about the special ed. In the paper, you say it's twenty percent, but at the board meeting, we mentioned also that there are costs for special ed sprinkled across the rest of the, the areas.
Yep, twelve hundred is just the special ed.
So, if you were to add up all of those miscellaneous values across the other areas, what is the true cost of special ed? Is it twenty-five percent? Is it thirty percent? It's hard to, you know, without knowing that number down here is the whole negatives.
You know, we did a little bit of work, that was the same question from one of the board members last month, as far as when we started with the five percent, you know, how much of that was special ed? And the increase in just special ed was a little over three percent, I think is what we came up with. At the top of my head, I, I, I don't know the exact percentage, but like I said, it, it would include, you know, your special ed portion, which is twenty percent, two percent of your speech, psychologist, occupational, physical therapy, your health services, because some of the students receive nursing services, obviously your specialized transportation, your guidance office, kids that require counseling. And I think, I think that's a, and support services, even support services from the School Resource Officer would be included in that. But it would be a portion of each, like the entire guidance department.
Add it all up?
If I added it all up, I would--
Yes. An extra three percent?
And yeah, I would say about a point, twenty-five percent, thirty percent too.
So, it's almost as expensive as the regular--
It could be at times, yes.
It just seems crazy.
With the difference in students too.
With the number of students.
That's, that's really the--
You know, the biggest thing, and I, and we're seeing this at the elementary schools too, is the, the, the number of needs. So, it, it used to be, you know, there were very mild disabilities that would come in. Right now, we're seeing some students that are coming in with significant needs, so they need all the services, special ed teacher, OT, PT, counseling, mental health services, nursing. So, if one student has those services, and then again, from twenty-one to twenty-two years old, that could be six or seven more kids. And the, the kids that are staying for a non-high school, so they don't get diplomas, are typically receiving all of those services because they will be in support of housing or life skills as they get, as they leave the high school. Sorry, there's no Australian answer, I wish there was.
My next question was regarding the medical, it's something we noted as a significant contribution to the increased cost. You know, I see, it seems that we're using health trust, is that the case?
Yes.
Have we examined shopping around, looking for other providers, possibly offering other plans to employees so that, you know, there's an advantage for the, for us to save money, but also for the employee to save money as well? Something similar to what has been done with the town?
So, you have two different unions here at the high school. You have your Teachers Union and your Support Staff Union. Each of the health portions are negotiated through your contracts, so they both have continuing contracts this year, so they weren't coming here for any changes. But typically, I think there's, if, if health insurance is on the table as a negotiating piece, I would think you look at a variety of health plans. Is that answering my question?
What I'm, what I'm getting at here is I'm not talking about taking anything away.
Right.
I'm talking about offering other options that they could elect into, assuming that's not against the-- to save money for themselves in the--
So, you're actually, to offer an alternative plan, you would need an agreement between the bargaining parties?
Have we asked?
I can't say they've asked in this district. I know specifically of another district in this SAU where we asked the question about offering an alternative plan, we, we had said, "No, we don't want to entertain it." They're very protective of having access to the Anthem Network.
So, it's a specific network that we're watching to--
The bargaining units bargain for a specific health plan or class of plans?
Bernie? Bernie? The last contract that was negotiated, which was three or four years ago now, we did, we came up with different plans that actually did cost the teachers less and cost the district less. And new teachers were required to take those, they couldn't take the, you know, the premium plans that had previously been offered. If a teacher had already been on those plans, they could elect to stay on them. There was no forcing them off, but they certainly had the option. We did have, we did have several people go on to the new plans. So, we have done that as part of the negotiations and I think going forward, we plan to, you know, continue in that same vein.
When are these contracts up?
Yeah, I can pull up the dates for the contracts, sure.
I mean, the reason why I'm asking is like, I hate it when contracts just get continued because it's easier for everybody, and some of them are not in everybody's best interest. And so, the time that the contract is up is, is basically your opportunity. And my personal recommendation is to avoid getting locked into long-term contracts, that you have no, no way out. Thank you.
So, to answer your question, the current teacher's contract goes through June of 2026, so that we anticipate that would start, negotiations would start in the fall of 2025. And the support staff contract currently goes through June of 2025, who'd be anticipated that negotiations on a new contract would start in the fall of 2024.
Come on up.
John Dow from Lundy, and I just got a question on the, a bunch of the different areas. It says general, and there's an increase of five thousand dollars in all of these places. And when it says general, what does this mean? What do we pay per year?
What are you looking at specifically? Yeah?
Well, this is, repairs and maintenance.
What line is it?
Eleven hundred, first page, down there at the four, four thirty, four hundred and thirty.
Line nineteen.
It says general, and it's--
Right, I know.
This is a number of places that said general.
Yeah.
What does general mean?
So, general repairs and maintenance are the cost to, to the upkeep of the building per year, so it's all of, I, do you want to go into the specifics about--
Well, that one, that line I was referring to is the general four thirty, that's our copy is paper. So, rather than we hit one, the whole school had picked it up, sign it, man, so that's how, it's under general. Where's your next gen, there's another general?
General down under six fifty.
Six fifty is going to be software. Yep, and again, that is--
It says it's additional software license.
This year, John, we, we took, that line used to be under custodial, under Kyla's direction, we moved all the licenses that go along with all these programs to the general education part, like the thirteen hundred, they'll have their license in there. This is all the software license for the eleven hundred account, the science department, the math department, who company their software that goes along with the programs in their curriculum.
So, each section has a general?
Each, generally, yeah, it does, John. I, I have one for athletics too, uh, that's put in there, and general technology, again, is, again, covers the entire building, but it's all for technology. I mean, the additional laptops or additional Chromebooks for incoming students coming in, so rather than, I target that line, I'll put it there.
Each time, two hundred and five thousand dollars?
Generally, John, it depends on the enrollment that's coming in the building too. So, I try to, I try to keep it as level funded as I can.
So, with that, we will close the hearing. And then we will, let me get my paperwork. So, we will need to move the three articles to the deliberative session February sixth, if somebody would like to.
I'll make the motion and move it to the deliberative, I didn't have to put it to the deliberative session.
Great, somebody wants to second that?
I'll second it.
Bonnie, I'm going to do roll call.
Yes.
Bernie, Bonnie--
Yes.
Yes.
Phil, Peter, Paul, Christie, Barbara, Peter, Paul, he's on the end. And myself, yes.
Yeah, you go over there.
Okay. All right. That's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, yes, motion to adjourn, the deliberative, sorry, the budget hearing. Who would like to do that?
Motion to adjourn.
Paul and Christie.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Christie and Paul. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, abstaining.